Twenty-one at 5:30 PM. And this is a public hearing. Everybody okay?
Yeah.
Okay. So although we do have a quorum of the Plan Commission here this evening, there will be no official business conducted of the Plan Commission or any other unit of the town of Sebastopol that is here this evening. This is an input session only. So it was properly noticed. It was published in the Door County Advocate on April 24th and April 28th. I'll just briefly go over this for the record so that it is on tape. People will know why we're here. The public hearing will be held on the proposed ordinance for the town of Sebastopol this evening at the Town Hall here at 4528 State Highway 57 in Sturgeon Bay. This hearing will allow public comments and concerns on the proposed ordinance regarding short-term rental of residential dwellings in the town of Sebastopol. The purpose of this hearing is to gather input. There will be no back and forth discussion among individuals or the Plan Commission members or Town Board members. The intent of the ordinance is to ensure that short-term rentals within the town of Sebastopol are adequate for protecting public health, safety, and general welfare. In addition, the ordinance would establish a minimum standards for human occupancy, determining the responsibilities of owners, agents, and property managers, offering properties for tourist rental, and to protect the character and stability of our neighborhoods within the town. It also provides provisions for the administration and enforcement. Seating was limited to approximately 25 people at a time. Amy was kind enough to coordinate and put together a list of speakers that did register ahead of time with their time allotments, so that worked out well. People who have not signed up will speak last. Residents can speak first. Each speaker will be given three minutes to address the Plan Commission. In the draft ordinance, the latest draft, is always available on the town website, www.townofsebastipool.com. Okay, so, as I said, town of Sebastopol residents will have the opportunity to speak first, although we do have a spreadsheet of those who have registered. I would ask that you please state your name and your primary residence. You will be limited to three minutes, and we do have timekeepers that will prompt you for one minute left, 30 seconds left, time's up. And like I said, this public hearing is for the purpose of gathering input only. There will be no discussion among individuals, Plan Commission members, board members, or anyone else here. Please come to the podium and use the microphone. I would like to thank our clerk, Amy, for coordinating this evening. Also, a thank you to our timekeepers over there, Elizabeth and Andrew. So let's set a good example and respect the timeframe for each speaker. And also out front, our registrant or concierge, Renee. Thank you to Renee this evening. So, without further ado, we will open the public hearing. And our first speaker, according to our spreadsheet, is Dan Mathine.
Good evening. As Linda said, my name is Dan Mathine. I reside full-time at 6126 Gordon Road here in Sebastopol. I speak tonight representing the Bay Shore Property Owners Association. It's a neighborhood group representing homes along Bay Shore Drive and the feeder roads from Sturgeon Bay to Ag Harbor Town Lines. We have more than 350 households in the association. I'm on the BSPOA Board. The BSPOA mission is to provide a forum for discussion and action on issues that impact the residential character of the neighborhoods and those that affect the character of Door County and/or the property rights of Bay Shore property owners. BSPOA has endorsed this statement. The Bay Shore Property Owners Association Board of Directors supports and endorses the proposed short-term rental ordinance as most recently posted. It is legitimate, based on common sense, not heavy-handed, and is enforceable. The need for the ordinance is clear. First, the issue is real. About 4% of Sebastopol dwellings are known to be available for short-term rental, and this number is rising fast. The current lack of regulation and inability to enforce common-sense, good neighbor ordinances has resulted in the problems identified by the hard work of the Sebastopol Planning Commission. They report that only a little more than half of Sebastopol's short-term rentals are fully licensed. More than half are advertising an occupancy rate that exceeds their septic system capability. Only a third of the STRs are owned by someone with a Sebastopol zip code on their tax bill. The town has received many complaints about noise, garbage problems, renter crowding, cars, RVs, and boats littering the neighborhoods and roads. There are many responsible short-term rental owners and operators that will have little problem meeting the regulations, but the town must have the process and the ability to remedy the bad actors to protect residential neighborhoods. With the minimum rental time provision, while the minimum rental time provision has had the most visibility and controversy, the other provisions are equally important, should address these problems and give short-term rental neighbors a way to voice and correct problems. After much thought and discussion, we believe the minimum rental time proposal is the best practical way to control churn rate on short-term rentals. We are confident that this ordinance will improve the monitoring and operation of short-term rentals and be tuned over time if needed. We urge its adoption. I want to thank you for all your hard work and thank you for listening.
Thank you. Mr. Jim Mischke?
Could I just make one comment before you start?
Sure.
So if you look at Andrew and Elizabeth over there, they're, like I said, they're flipping when you have 60 seconds, 30 seconds, et cetera, et cetera. So if you think you're running out of time, just take a look at those two. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, commissioners and board members. I am Jim Mischke. I reside full-time at 4159 Bay Shore Drive. And you've got to hear me one more time, I guess, because I'm the only public person who's attended all but one of the 10 meetings on this topic in the last year. While I have no dog in this fight, I participated believing that my eight years' experience owning a short-term rental outside Wisconsin may be useful. Door County has 15% of the licensed STRs in Wisconsin. We're number one in the state, but our population is less than 1% of the state. As STR offerings expand, I fear that the residential character of Door County will be overwhelmed and we will lose our throwback charm. I fully realize the importance of the tourist industry in Door County, but let's do STRs right while protecting what we have. I believe that this proposed ordinance aptly finds the middle ground between the interests of the four parties involved. First, it protects the interests of those STR owners that have obeyed by the rules. It levels the playing field. I'm sure that conscientious STR operators do not want to cause problems, but unfortunately, there have been more than a few documented exceptions. Plus, half of your competitors are consciously or unconsciously ignoring license, inspection, and operations requirements. All STRs need to be licensed and running to the established quality and safety standards. Customers expect this. Second, it levels the playing field for motels, B&amp;Bs, and other STR competitors. They provide quality and flexible accommodations under an existing and strict set of rules and regulations. Third, those renting STRs to offset some of their ownership costs, not to run a full-fledged business, can still do that under the flexible and reasonable ordinance provisions. A deliberate examination of the numbers shows that this is to be true. I did them. Fourth, residents will know that septic system limits, RV occupancy, noise, parking, and other existing ordinances that are applied to STRs. I hasten to add that these regulations should be enforced for all properties. The difference is that in this ordinance, it makes it possible to identify who is responsible for compliance when 65% of the STRs are owned by somebody outside this zip code. Full-time residents not complying with ordinances are easy to identify. Today, STR owners are not. This ordinance will let residents know who to call if there's a problem, and they have a right to protect their investment and not be subject to the spot zoning that we have effectively seen today. Again, thanks to the commission for your efforts. I encourage and prompt transmittal of the final proposed ordinance to the Board of Supervisors, its adoption, and for other Door County officials to consider a similar ordinance. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Gary Londo. Okay, maybe he will show up later.
Would I get another five minutes?
All right, Beth Rush.
Good evening, everybody. Actually, I'm going to take this thing off. For those of you who don't know me, I am Beth Rush, and I have been a Sebastopol full-time resident for 22 years. And prior to that, my parents bought property back in 1988, and I'm on the property that they had purchased. So I've been here a long time. I have four children. Three of them have graduated from Sebastopol, and one is currently a junior. So I feel very vested in the town of Sebastopol, and I do own a short-term rental, and my goal has always been to be a good neighbor, partially because my parents lived alongside of me for 20 years. But we, short-term rentals, are all in favor of regulation and being good neighbors. We just want fair regulation. We care deeply about public health, safety, and the general welfare in our community. And for all of those, we also want the character and the feel of Door County to remain as it has been. And we feel that short-term rental is a low-profile way to bring tourists into the county versus big-box structures like the ones that are going up, being built up north. But according to the police department, there's no real data, none, that supports the claims about excessive noise or parking overflow. There isn't any data either that support the claims of overwhelmed private onsite wastewater systems or endangered groundwater quality, none that we can find. These are all claims based on speculation and perception of a few people. But contrary to popular belief, perception is not reality. I am also an owner, or part of, the Bay Shore Property Owners Association, just as a side note. But that fictional reality is unfortunately driving, is the driving force behind the latest version of the ordinance which talks about being able to have renters only once in a seven-night period, regardless of the length of stay. Such measures effectively kill over 50% of our rentable nights. We are not big corporations. We're just regular folks trying to create some extra income to better our families and in the process, better our town through occupancy taxes and tourism spending. Many of us have gone into debt to make expensive repairs and upgrades to our properties to be able to participate in this marketplace. Over the past few months, you know, I've kind of asked myself if the decision is already made. And, you know, we just ask that we work together and come up with a solution that works for everybody. I trust this board will not be more worried with the optics of the decision rather than the substance of the decision itself in the end. Let's create a joint committee that will ensure every STR complies with all pertinent regulations. You know, we want to do the right thing. Thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you, Beth. I just saw Gary Londo walk in.
Yeah.
So if you're ready to go, Gary, we're ready for you. If you would please state your name and your primary residence. Thank you.
My name is, can I take this off?
Yes, you may pull it down. Sure.
My name is Gary Londo. I live at 4376 Heverly Road, which is just over the hill. Good evening. I guess I'm going to go back a little bit in time because this board, we put together a kios, a kiosk, so we could attract business. And to me, what we're doing now is we're trying to limit the business. And it doesn't seem to make a whole lot of sense to me. And you want to limit, if I understand right, limit the times that they can rent. How many days, is that true? Is that on there?
Gary, we're going to accept, and we'll give you an extra few seconds at the end here, but we're accepting input only, so there's not going to be any discussion back and forth.
Okay.
We'll address this input at our meeting on Thursday night, so. I'm not being rude. We're not being rude.
No, no, I understand that.
If we don't respond, we're just accepting input only.
But that's just kind of where I was coming from with this, because we put that money into the kiosk. We wanted to get all these people coming in. And now that we're getting the business, now it seems like we want to limit it. And it's kind of a change of direction. I guess I only have a few questions then because it's going to affect the small business owners that run these cleaning services. Yeah, I said that they could get more jobs, but they're in their own little businesses, and they're probably making a lot more than they can at a regular job. Checking up on my notes here. I guess that, about all I really got to say, because I had more questions than anything. I just want it to be fair for everybody. I mean, I don't want to be ending up paying up a bigger tax bill because this doesn't work out for the community. I don't want to end up paying the extra taxes because what was stated in the paper that I read, that if you limit them to these days, you're going to lose income. And I know we're always looking for income, so that's about all I got to say. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Gary. And for anyone else going to the podium, on the counter of the podium, there are bacterial wipes, so feel free to grab one of those or wipe down the surface or whatever when you go to the podium. Mike Carr? Is Mike here? I do not see Mike. We can catch him later.
Good evening. My name is William Schuster. I live at 4095 Glidden Drive. I own property on Glidden Drive and on the Bay Shore, so I have property on both of the most busiest STR roads. 27 years on Glidden, and I'm, family has owned property on Bay Shore for 169 years. I'm here to support the proposed ordinance and recommend to the Plan Commission that you advance it to the Town Board with the recommendation for approval. I don't live in the town of Ag Harbor or some other town in Door County that doesn't have zoning. I made a point of buying property in Sebastopol so I could rely on the residential zoning to protect my property, to protect it from commercial and business development next to my property. By design, that's what I did. Getting a handle on the abuse of the septic system capacity, which is well documented in the report, and the number of days of stay are the two items that are most important to me. I'll focus on the length of time. Rapid expansion of STRs is morphing areas of residential zone neighborhoods into quasi-commercial business districts. There's no other way to say it. If you want to build them, build them in a commercial area. This rapid transition is and will continue to threaten the residential nature of our neighborhoods. Allowing one, two, three days in a row is nothing more than a boutique motel. It really is. You can call it what you want, but that's what it is. I said at a previous meeting, how would it go if I came here and asked for a zoning change of my lot to make a small motel in the middle of Glidden Drive or down on the Bay Shore? Oh, hell would break loose, and it would be told no real quick. We are at a tipping point on the rapid STR growth. This town needs to take action now, or this backdoor change in residential zone neighborhoods will be permanent and lost forever. There will be no going back. We will lose that in Sebastopol, particularly along the shoreline. Lastly, do not, please do not be swayed by or hoodwinked by the statements and claims that current STRs are just a long-term Door County tradition. The past occasional sharing or even renting out the family cottage to a friend or relatives not even close to this worldwide big business of STRs. This is a worldwide big business we're talking about, and it's just a piece of it here. Thanks for your opportunity for me to speak. I hope to get you some written comments. Maybe I can find out when the deadline is. I'm sorry, I just got back in town. And I thank you, folks, for all the bloody time you put into this. Good for you. All right.
Thank you. Okay, so our maximum capacity is 25. I know a lot of you would like to hang around and listen. I don't know how many are out in the hall waiting. Amy's going to check for us. So if you have spoken, show some courtesy and maybe exit the building. It is available. It's going out live on Sebastopol Channel 986, if you have Charter. Or it's also live on YouTube, correct, Lottie?
Yes.
Live right now. So you can watch it from your phone and over at the Institute Saloon. If you go into the back dance hall, you can watch the proceedings from our satellite office.
The saloon.
So Amy's checking for us here if we just wait for a couple minutes.
Yeah, we can continue on where we are for a little bit yet.
Okay.
Because we are on a schedule.
Okay, we're good to go, so anyone can stay. Jean Elste? Is Jean here? Mark Elste? We are ahead of schedule, so they were scheduled for 6:15 and 6:20, so like Amy said, we are running ahead of schedule.
Thank you, and thank you to the board for holding this public hearing this evening. My residence is 6391 Little Harbor Drive in Sebastopol. So why is our town doing this? Because simply, a proportion of STRs in this town are not adhering to their state-mandated requirement to obtain a license, to maintain their license yearly, and to keep current with their sanitary permit on total numbers allowed, and to obtain a permit from the Door County Tourism Commission, Zoned Commission. My own mantra on STRs and the proliferation is simply water quality, as the previous speaker spoke to. When an STR opens two properties for mine, I hope there is education with the vacationers on our karst topography, well-contamination potential, and the need to preserve water. It's all around us, but we've got to preserve it. I'll call if I see over-capacity limits, and I will be relentless as my drinking water is at stake. When STRs register with Destination Door County as a business, they sign the following membership agreement. Really interesting. "By signing, I agree to adhere to all local, state, and federal laws and regulations, as well as accepted ethical standards. Violations of the same may constitute grounds for refusal of membership by Destination Door County as determined by the Board of Directors and specified in the bylaws of the organization." Took a little searching, but there it is. So I asked Destination Door County, "How are you monitoring this agreement?" I asked the newly-formed Door County Vacation Rental Association in Sebastopol, "How are you informing and monitoring your members?" And I asked the Facebook group of STRs called Home Sharing Hosts of Door County, "How are you informing and monitoring your group? How are each of you reaching the non-compliance?" It's simple. Follow the already-in-place laws and now Sebastopol's proposed ordinance. It was carefully researched, written, and rewritten over a year-plus. I attended some of those meetings, not as many as one of my colleagues, but I heard the research, the rationale, and the input that was received from the few STRs that came. You well know, other Door County communities are watching our progress and are ready to move forward similarly. Fairness? Yes, by all means. Just follow the laws and regulations. You were attracted to our community, I hope, for its natural beauty, water, and the area attractions for your guests, and so was I. Don't ruin a good thing through negligence to your collective responsibilities. Thank you.
Thank you. I just saw Mike Carr come in. I believe if you want, we're running a little bit ahead of schedule, Mike, so if you want to go up to the podium, again, please state your name and address. It's input only, so unfortunately, there won't be any discussion back and forth. And we do have timekeepers that will give you a little prompt when you're nearing the end of your three minutes. Thank you.
Well, my name is Mike Carr. I live at 5039 County Highway P, right down the road over here. I've been there, I guess, almost 10 years now. Used to live in Ellison Bay before that, 25 years. I'm a marine contractor. I work on the water. I give people access to the water. I'm working on the beach in Fish Creek right now. Next week, going up to Rock Island to open that up for the state park. I have clients who have STRs that use my services because of the increased demand on the water, and if this six-day restriction goes in, it will limit those people, and probably I will lose those jobs. And these aren't small jobs. There's $300,000 or $400,000 worth of work for me. And I don't need the work. You know, I've established my business. I can do other things. However, when you restrict me, then you restrict people from getting out there. So the more you restrict me and my clients, the more you restrict those other people. And some of those clients I work for too, the NIMBYs that don't want it in their backyard. And I have a hard time with that. I wrote something in the paper. You saw it, The Peninsula Pulse, about my thoughts on most of this, and I'm not going to read that back again. However, I see this, STRs, Airbnb, VRBO, as a way for people to enjoy Door County. And when you restrict that, then you stop them from enjoying the county, and they won't come here. If this is enforced, I believe at least half, probably more of the STRs up here will go out of business. And then that gets to the next point. So they pay taxes to our town. Where is the money going to be made up again? It's over $100,000 worth of dollars that come in from room tax money. So does that money have to come out of my pocket now as a taxpayer up here? And then I'm restricted even more because I can't, my work is limited? So it's a double-edged sword. You're actually, the rest of us have to pay more tax money, and then you're restricting our income to help pay for that tax money. So it kind of bothers me why this was even discussed, brought up, and not looking at the other long-term, the other options that can be used to work on this. And I have... And I have, I understand, I was on a plan to commission over to grow. I understand the position you're in, totally. And unfortunately, you have limited powers and you want to, excuse me, you want to be able to do this stuff, but yet you're restricted in how you can do it. But doing the six-day restriction just doesn't make sense to me. What if you get people that want to party there all the time? You know, my God, I have a neighbor who wanted to open a quarry. Let's go after him on this slide. The people that are dumping. Is that it? Okay, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. All right. I did not see the, Elsties did come in, yes. All right, we have Gene first, or Mark, I don't think it matters. All right. Like I said, we're accepting input only, so there won't be any discussion back and forth. Please state your name and address. And Andrew and Elizabeth are keeping three-minute timers, so you can just look to them to see when your timer's getting close.
Thank you. All right. Good evening. My name is Mark Elstie. My wife, Gene, and I reside at 4339 Glidden Drive. Our home was built in 1992, and we were weekend residents until my retirement seven years ago. I support the proposed ordinance on short-term rentals. It appears to me as having been fairly written after deliberate input from the owners of short-term rentals in Sebastopol residents. Many of these rentals are an area-zoned residential. When our home was constructed, we did not want to build next to a boutique hotel, which short-term rentals have become. Our desire was to live in a neighborhood. Although some of our neighbors are weekenders or seasonal, they are still folks we have developed friendships with. The short-term rental has changed the dynamic of the neighborhood. Finally, the packing of beds in many of the short-term rentals is of concern. Many of these units now host guest counts that surpass what the septic is designed for. If we want Door County to remain a top destination in Wisconsin, we need to protect its resources as well as its curb appeal. Thanking you for allowing me to speak this evening. Short and sweet.
All right, thank you. And Gene, please.
My name is Gene Elstie. I live at 4339 Glidden Drive. I am here to represent the Board of Directors of the Glidden Drive Association. The Board supports the passage of the short-term rental ordinance. And what I would like to do is tell you a story that happened on Glidden Drive. A home was sold in late summer of 2020, and during the sale of that home, the inspection of the septic revealed it was failing. According to the county rules, they have one year to replace that septic system. In the meantime, this property was listed on both VRBO and Airbnb as a rental with a, and they had no State of Wisconsin license. Now, because of the grapevine, I heard these things, so I began the process to notify the town. The town notified the state. A license could not be issued because of the failing septic, and now the septic is being replaced. For the Board of Directors, this illustrates why we believe an ordinance is needed. We need to know, number one, that these establishments that are short-term rentals have our license and do not have failing septics. In spite of the Glidden Drive Association having a written good neighbor policy since 2016, not all short-term rentals are good neighbors. And this ordinance, by its provisions, brings accountabilities to the owners of the short-term rentals. That's all we have to say, and I thank you.
Thank you very much. I do not see Jim Nellen. I do not see Pam Seiler. There's no one out in the hallway, right? All right, and like I said, we are running quite a bit ahead of time. Tim Chapman?
My name is Tim Chapman. I own property at 4689 Bay Shore Drive and 4695. I live on 4689. 4695 is a short-term rental that my wife and I have rented out personally for the last four or five years, and we enjoy it a great deal. I'm a little disappointed in what's happened here. I don't know what caused this big backlash against short-term rental. We currently, apparently, have 70 short-term rentals in Sebastopol. I would not, I would think that probably at least 60 of them, 55 of them, are good neighbors. And I want them all to be good neighbors. I was disappointed that the Board did not invite any of the short-term rental owners to be part of this proposal, at least that I know of, and I think that they could have benefited from input. Input from a two-minute speech or a three-minute speech doesn't constitute discussion. So I think we've created an adversarial relationship here between good, short-term rental people, all short-term rental people. I think it's somewhat adversarial. I'm very disappointed in the six-day. Personally, I rent out from three to any length of time. Half of my rentals are probably three or four days. All of your festivals, people don't come up here for a week to go to a festival. They don't come up here for a week to go to a wedding. And so that knocks the festival and the weddings and that type of thing right out from under me. That creates a very uneven playing field for anyone else that can rent for two days, three days, whatever they want. I would prefer to rent for six days, seven days, eight days, unless the tenant is a lousy tenant, then I'd be happy for him to rent for three days. I'm very fortunate that most of my people that come up here are wonderful people. They, I don't think I've ever had a complaint. The one thing that I, that really disappoints me is the transparency. That's a new word in politics. But I have asked, how many complaints have you had from short-term rental owners? And I've never gotten an answer. Not one answer have I received. I haven't received any information on who the bad owners are. I haven't received anything like that. And we, I'd like to be part of a short-term rental group that takes care of this. We don't, I don't think, I once had a general tell me, he called me up, and I was in the military, and he said, he had a problem or he wanted me to solve a problem, and he says, keep it simple, stupid. And I'm not calling you stupid by any means, but anyway, I would like you to keep it a lot simpler, and I think it could be simpler, and we could achieve the same results without bringing in, am I at zero?
Yes.
I'm at zero, but anyway, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Tim. All right, I do see Mr. Nellen just came in. We're running ahead of schedule, Jim, so you can go right to the podium if you like. And Pam, okay. You could pull your mask down if you like. There are wipe, sanitary, bacterial wipes there if you want to wipe anything down before you start. And again, if you would please state your name and address, and it's input only, we are not having discussion back and forth. Thank you.
Well, thank you. My name is Jim Nellen. I'm a year-round resident of the town of Sebastopol, and I reside at 4501 Lori Lane. I support the proposed ordinance. One of the reasons is it's timely to consider these matters because of the advent of many hotels. These are STRs that sleep 16, 18, 20 or more guests. These lodgings began as single-family residences and have morphed into something entirely different, and they are oftentimes found in the middle of residential neighborhoods. STRs, for all practical purposes, didn't exist more than a few years ago. Those of us, those of us who live in a neighborhood for some time had no way of protecting ourselves against STRs since we really didn't even know they were there. But their unrestrained growth undermines the reason people move into a neighborhood. Let me address, however, the larger concern, which admittedly is beyond the scope of the ordinance. We are in the process, I believe, of losing our sense of neighborhood community. Our neighbors are vanishing because the economics of an STR are so attractive. Instead of neighbors, including seasonal residents, the people inhabiting the homes next to us are transients. Here today and gone tomorrow, we are strangers to one another with little interest in one another's welfare. And there is no end in sight. The number of STRs grows with each passing month, thereby accelerating the end of a neighborhood. With each, with each sale or generational transfer, there's a distinct possibility that it will become an STR. Have we asked ourselves, what is the tipping point when the number of homes becoming STRs destroys a neighborhood? Looking at the growth of STRs, the endpoint when our neighborhood becomes more commercial than residential, I believe, is fast approaching. Unfortunately, state law does not permit us to consider banning STRs altogether, but the town can regulate them. And what the ordinance does is quite meaningful. It addresses much of the day-to-day friction that comes from living next to an STR, barking dogs, loud noises, fireworks. It also demands that STR owners have completed a basic health and safety inspection. And it protects the environment against overtaxed pouts. For these reasons, I think the ordinance is a good idea, and I hope it is adopted. There is an issue with regard to churn, which is the unending stream of strangers constantly rotating through nearby resident, pardon me, rental properties. I had hoped that the ordinance would have prohibited rentals of six nights or fewer. That would have reduced the rate of churn. But the ordinance takes a softer approach than that. I understand. The town's comprehensive plan does give us guidance. It supports the economic development, economic development, but only if it's harmonious and compatible with the surrounding character. Unfortunately, again, because of state law, the town will not have the opportunity to consider the appropriateness of STRs as commercial activity within residential neighborhoods. The plan does, however, recommend that negative effects, traffic, noise, and others, be addressed through ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right, and I did see Pam come in as well. Like I said, we are running ahead of schedule.
Good evening. I'm Pam Seiler, 6155 South Shoreside Circle. I appreciate the opportunity as a resident and a taxpayer to address the issues brought forth in the draft ordinance regarding our short-term rentals. I agree that there are issues with STRs that may need to be addressed, and I agree that they should be licensed through DATCAP at the state level, through Door County Tourism Zone, and locally through Sebastopol. I agree with the requirement of having the property owner within 75 miles of the property or having an agent within the area. I agree with notifying neighbors of contact information if there actually are problems. But in Section 5, Item 4, the town will have the ability to revoke or non-renew an STR license if they are not abiding by the items outlined in the ordinance. Maybe that should be our starting point, since we've not had this tool before, rather than spending tens of thousands of dollars on a monitoring service in Granicus. It seems as though we're going from zero to nuclear in one step. I appreciate the change in operations of Item 6D1 relating to the rental time, but would like it clarified on days versus nights since that is how lodging is booked. So if that could become more clear, we would appreciate it. I approve, I also believe that Item 6D4, as it relates to the private onsite wastewater treatment systems, is overstated in that realistically, a vacation rental uses less than a traditional home, as long as it's not being continually used throughout the year. Lastly, I believe that Item 6D6C regarding prohibiting pets from being left unattended is excessive. We know that people travel with pets frequently, and sometimes taking a pet with you simply isn't realistic. If a family wanted to attend a Sunday church while on vacation, this ordinance says that someone would have to stay back with that pet. Again, I would like to reiterate that I support certain aspects of this ordinance and appreciate the reworking of the minimum night stay, which appears to allow STR owners a little bit more flexibility in their rentals. My request is that when the final ordinance is presented, that it not be implemented until January 1 of 2022 in order to give owners enough time to comply and to alert their returning guests. I believe most all of Sebastopol's STR owners are good owners and are trying to be good citizens of the community in which they've invested. The very few problems that have been reported shouldn't penalize the many of them that are doing the right thing. Thank you.
Betty Parsons, I think I did see Betty come in. All right. Betty, if you would come to the podium, please. Please state your name and address. And again, input only, so we won't be discussing back and forth or answering any questions. Thank you.
My name is Betty Parsons. I reside at 4147 Bay Shore Drive. Thank you, Plan Commission, for your very thorough and committed and broad depth of research on the issue of the STR ordinance. My husband and I have thoroughly read it, and we support it. And we support it for the reasons that we have already stated in the two letters that we sent to the town board and the Plan Commission, and for all the comments that have already been made here this evening. So it's our fervent hope that the Plan Commission will recommend to the town board that they vote to support this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Paul Wickman. I live at 3871 Bay Shore Drive. Been a resident there since 1986. I'm not here, I'm here once again to talk in favor of this ordinance. This time, I'm not going to bore you with barking dogs, barking problems. Owners and property managers, at this regard, the present rules. As some in the past have said, I want to focus on the neighborhood. I moved to Sebastopol to live in a neighborhood. I've always lived in a neighborhood. At the rate we're going, we're going to have more STRs than neighbors. That's not what Sebastopol's about, in my opinion. In my opinion, we're a bunch of people that know each other and not people that move in and out. I support the committee's work. I know it's been hard, long, time-consuming, and I too am in favor of all the regulations. The six-day minimum, I think, is a must. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Paul. Stephen Hurley? I do not see Steve. All right.
Ray Spangler, 128 Crandall Court, Schaumburg. Now, we have all these rules for tenants that are for the health and safety of the residents. And what is going to protect our tenants from the residents? If it's a good rule for the tenants, it should apply to every resident also. Residents can make all the noise they want, but the tenant gets thrown out. Residents can park anywhere they want, but if somebody parks somewhere, we are fined. I mean, freedom in America is rules applied to everyone equally. I mean, freedom in America is rules applied to everyone equally. Now, I've been renting on Glidden Drive for 30 years, and some of the neighbors opposed it in 1993. And one of the reasons they opposed it was a covenant that Glidden Drive had. And the covenant stated that only Gentile Caucasians could live on the drive. 30 years later, it's pretty much Gentile Caucasians there today. I think racism has a part of this. Now, what's the difference between a concern and a complaint? Well, concern is, I'm afraid that alien aircraft are going to land on my house. A complaint is, look at what that alien aircraft did to my house. The aliens are eating my roses or something. It's something that actually happened. Now, we've been asking these people for a copy of any complaint that's been voiced against us. Because we don't have any complaints, well, nothing came out of it. So I use the Open Records Act to get every piece of lead, every piece of paper that had mentioned short-term rentals. Guess how many complaints I got? Zero. I had concerns, but concerns are not complaints. Complaints are something that actually happened. Right? Now, I think that when you don't apply laws to everyone equally, then you use it for harassment, and that's what this is about. Harassment.
All right. Thank you. Karen Case.
My name is Karen Case, and I have property at 6375 Little Harbor Drive. But I am a legal resident of Florida, specifically the town of Longboat Key, and it's Sarasota County, which is south of Tampa and north of Fort Meyer. Longboat Key, like Door County, is a vacation community surrounded by water. We have the arts in both places, music, lectures, recreation activities, kayaking, and of course, fine dining. And I'll tell you a little story that the best chefs on Longboat Key went to school in Green Bay, Wisconsin. And when the Packers play in Tampa, they close their restaurants, hire a coach, and go up to the game. They are getting older now, however, and there are fewer of them. I'm a snowbird. I stay in Florida in the wintertime, except during a pandemic, and I come here in the summertime. Obviously, rental income would be good for me to offset my Door County expenses year round. In Florida, the shortest time you can rent is one month, mostly two months. My own homeowners association limits it to three months. So this is a privilege to rent for five, for one week. It's a privilege that comes with duties. I'm looking at this ordinance as guidance. The proposed ordinance gives me guidance for me when I want to rent for a week. It gives me guidance for the information I must give to my renters, and it gives me guidance for the information that I give to my adjacent homeowners, who are my friends. My property is in a residential community, a lovely residential community. It isn't a theme park or Wisconsin Dells or an RV park, and I'd like it to stay that way, and so would the rest of the neighborhood, I'm sure. I want to commend this town for all the work they've done on this, and all the people who have worked on this ordinance, because it took an awful lot of work. Their foresight for their work and the hours spent on it. And I think this ordinance is needed by the residents of Sebastopol who are going to rent, and it needs to be passed. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Hurley. All right. Kimberly Hazen. Kimberly?
My name's Kimberly Hazen. I have two vacation rentals in Liberty Grove and a 16-unit long-term apartment complex in Sister Bay. Thanks for listening tonight. I know you have a lot to consider. I'm giving you two petitions tonight. One, you might have seen it in earlier part of this process, when it only had a few hundred signatures. It now has the signatures of 744 people who do not want limits on SDRs specifically in Door County. This was not a statewide petition. It was directed at visitors to Door County only, and it's clear these people believe that a one-stay per seven-day period would limit lodging choices, promote more large hotel condo projects, and drive out healthy competition. So I'm going to give that to you guys. The second petition I'm giving you, I think, is a little bit more important. It only has 250 names on it, but it's people who agree that their businesses rely on short-term rentals in Door County. These are your cleaners, your landscapers, your septic service people. They rely on SDRs in Door County. I just did my taxes, and full disclosure, there's no fat here. Every dollar that I make by renting my family cabins, I am putting back into the local economy in this peninsula. I buy softener salt at Nelson's. I buy appliances at Door County Co-op, the furnace from Synergy, flooring from Door County Carpet One. I regularly pay cleaners, a landscaper, Vaughn from Last Stop for plowing, Jeff Triptow for tree trimming, Lundquist for plumbing, painting work from Bruce Pisick, holding tank pump outs from Pile Sanitation and Royal Flush. I have garbage removal from going. What I don't pay in sales taxes and income taxes, I am putting back into the Door County economy. Not to mention the room tax, which we all know where that goes. As leaders, you are responsible for making decisions for your community and your whole community, not just your neighborhood. In 2019, Linda Waite stated on her Sebastopol Town Board Candidate questionnaire, quote, "The town board's role is to work cooperatively in the best interests of the town. This is a group effort based on consensus, sometimes compromise, with the whole picture in mind." And I hope that you guys look at the whole picture, the whole community, the whole county. Thank you. I'm also going to give you the Good Neighbor Policy that I have posted in my vacation rentals that all my guests see. They know to keep their dogs leashed, not barking, all that stuff. Who should I give these to?
You can give that to our color, please. Thank you. Thank you. I still do not see Steve Hurley. Rich Summer. Michael Surveys. All right. Thank you.
Hello, Michael Surveys, 7675 Elm Point Road, Bailey's Harbor. My wife and I own two vacation rental properties in Door County. We have been operating SDRs for over 10 years. Approximately eight years ago, we both quit our full-time jobs and decided this would be our retirement plan. We take a lot of pride in our properties and have built many relationships with our guests over years. My wife and I took two very trashy-looking properties and turned them into very much-desired locations that actually have enhanced the neighborhood in which they are located versus the stereotype that SDRs bring down the neighborhood. We pride ourselves in being good neighbors. In fact, in over 10 years, we have only had one complaint from one neighbor. It was simply someone parking, that was parking on a no-parking street. We resolved that with a simple phone call to our guest. I bet anyone who lives in a neighborhood, SDR or not, would be happy to only have one complaint in over 10 years. At Sebastopol's annual meeting a few weeks ago, it was reported that you received over $100,000 from tourism tax. If a six-night restriction is placed into effect, most SDRs will lose half of their bookings and possibly their homes. Then the town will lose tax revenue. If you lose that tax revenue, it will need to be made up by raising property taxes to all residents. Who wants that? You may think the guests can just stay at hotels, but after experiencing the enjoyment of staying in a home, many families will never go back to the hotel experience and will take their families elsewhere if they cannot rent SDRs. I asked the town of Sebastopol to not enact this very unfair six-night restriction ordinance. I asked that we work together with a mediator to come up with a better plan, like strengthening and enforcing noise, parking, and septic system ordinances. We have septic system ordinances in place, and we just need to enforce what we have. Last year, the Door County Sheriff's Office received only seven nuisance complaints monthly out of 13,000 households in Door County. It appears to me a few bad apples would be creating a lot of hardship for many short-term vacation rental property owners and decreasing a lot of revenue for other businesses. Let us work together and come up with a better uniform plan. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Michael.
Hello, I'm Debbie Fostick, and I live at 4590 Glidden Drive. My parents built our small cabin on Glidden Drive in 1968, when I was a senior in high school, and it has meant so much to our family for so long that it really is our heart. I can't go in our cabin without remembering my parents. And one of the things that I've been hearing a lot, as I've been following all of this discussion and in writing before tonight, is keeping referring to short-term rentals as businesses. I do not think of my little cabin as a business. I think of it as our precious family cabin that we are trying desperately to hold on to. Taxes have gone up and up and up as the size of houses on Glidden Drive have gone up and up and up, and our cabin pretty much, although we try to keep it neat and tidy and attractive, kind of looks like the gatekeeper's cottage compared to a lot of the houses there right now. But we continue to pay our taxes smilingly and willingly because we love this place. We don't want it to be loud. We don't want it to be noisy. We don't, although frankly, every Fourth of July week, as long as I can remember since 1968, people set off fireworks all week long, which makes my dog crazy. And I think most of those people are residents. I don't think they're renters. I don't think there are that many rentals on Glidden Drive. But we haven't complained because we understand that there are a lot of different people here with different preferences, and we try to be friendly neighbors to our neighbors. So if there's something we don't like so much, we sort of grin and bear it. But I can tell you that we will, we spend a lot of time here in the summers, but in order to help us pay our taxes and to keep the cottage in good repair, we do rely on our renters. We have never had a complaint, ever. And we do use a rental agency that I think does a good job. We had a complaint once about somebody who didn't take great care of the interior of our cabin. I don't think it bothered anybody else, but it bothered us, and our rental agent made sure that those people were never allowed back. So I'm asking you, the six, I want to uphold the rules. I want everybody to play by the rules. I want everybody to be licensed, but six days, the six-day requirement absolutely cuts our rental options in half and makes it that much harder for my family, and especially my nephew, who's inheriting the cabin from the rest of us, to keep it going after my generation is gone. So I'm asking you for a compromise solution where we go after the offenders and leave the rest of us to hang onto our homes. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Brad Birmingham. I do not see Brad. Julie Feller. We're an hour ahead of time?
How can that be?
So we recess and come back in an hour? I'm just wondering if we can call any of these people.
I'm definitely trying.
Do you think there's anyone over? If anyone is over at the Institute Saloon and listening in and is scheduled for later, please come on over now.
There are quite a few people over there.
Are there really? Okay. I'm going to repeat that. If you are at the Institute Saloon and you are watching and you're scheduled for a later time, we're running way ahead of schedule, so come on over. We will watch our limits here, so we do not want to exceed 25 in this room. If we get to the point where people will be coming over, if you've already spoken, you may be asked to leave. So, okay? All right. So we just had two gentlemen come in. What is your name, sir?
Rich Summer.
Rich Summer, I believe. We are running ahead of schedule. And 7:15, but we are ready for you now, if you want to.
Linda, Steve Hurley's in the back, too.
Oh, Steve Hurley? Okay. Yep, Steve, you were ahead. So if you want to come up to the microphone, please, state your name and address. And like I said, we're accepting input only. We're not having any discussion back and forth. Thank you.
Okay. Sorry, I'm out of breath. I just ran in. So, Stephen Hurley, 3985 Bay Shore Drive. Thank you for taking the time to listen. I appreciate all of your responsibilities in this and all matters relating to the Plan Commission. I participated in Plan Commission in the city of Sturgeon Bay myself, so I understand what you're going through. So thank you. I live directly next door to a short-term rental, which is located at 3973 Bay Shore Drive, and lists a maximum occupancy of 16 people. I had a few pages typed up, but I shortened it, so here's the summary. I enjoy Door County in my home for the same reasons I would venture to guess most of you, most everyone here, enjoy it for the same reasons. It's easy to find nature, history, peace and quiet not far outside of town. I'm sure those are the reasons tourists come here as well, and I don't blame them. I welcome tourists as they support our local economy and communities, and we have plenty of resorts, hotels, and bed and breakfasts to accommodate this need. I understand this ordinance may be at a point where the majority of modifications are complete, but please don't forget the tourists who rent these properties are not permanent residents. They pack their bags and leave unhappy neighbors behind. I've had several firsthand experiences of asking the renters, well after midnight through the work week, to please keep it down when the music and conversation is too loud to sleep. I've had to pick up their trash in my yard, so I'm a little flustered with the whole thing, pick up their trash in my yard, repair my fence and landscaping after late-night parties, had damage to my boat from kids throwing rocks on the beach, landing into the boat. I could go on, but these are not activities or actions of neighbors. I understand the ordinance addresses some of these points, but not all. When making decisions about the strength of this ordinance and consequences for not adhering to it, please remember these short-term rentals are small hotels and resorts operating in residential neighborhoods in between homes and families. Please be fair to the residents of the neighborhoods who chose to live in a single-family home in a single-family neighborhood, not next to a resort or hotel. I could have chose to... I could have chose to live next to waterfront areas, but I chose a quiet place along Bay Shore Drive, so thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Stephen. So now, Mr. Summer, please.
I'm Rich Summer, four-two-two-four, Janic Circle North, Stevens Point, Wisconsin. I'd like you to imagine one of these pesky midges that we have all over sitting on a Tiffany vase or vase. Depends on, okay, I'm speaking about Door County in general since there are similar proposals in other townships. We do pay taxes on ten properties in Door County. My wife and I pay federal income tax, state income tax, state sales tax, county sales tax, and tourism bureau fees. These are things I have to do before my second cup of coffee in the morning because they're all compliances with government regulations. This is before I can start to do anything with our short-term rentals. Running short-term rentals are not a lot different than running student rentals in Stevens Point for forty years. Know what your expectations are, communicate your expectations clearly, and have no rules that are you're not willing and able to enforce. Maybe big gathering parties were a little more real than the short-term rentals. These three points are not a lot different than what was expected of me in thirty-one years of teaching high school biology. Know your expectations, communicate your expectations, and be willing to enforce them. Since short-term rentals are our business in Door County, we attended two national conventions. Since our business, we want to know the best practices. Now, I'm not going to try and sing, but like a good neighbor, we actually met Bonnie Herman, who sang that phrase, and people listened to it for twenty years, and every time somebody listened to it, she got paid. I make it a point to introduce myself to each neighbor and give them my contact card to contact me if there are any issues. My wife and I spent the last three days deep cleaning and repairing our three cottages for our first guests. We both wore holes in our jeans. As a trend, we were not able to hire college students to help this year. If I can't hire students to clean behind the toilet, I have to do it myself. One-half of our rentals are three to four nights. A proposal of limiting that would cut taxes and fees in half to the county and the township. Really? Did they talk too slow? Oh, you missed the story, but Mrs. Lou.
Thank you, sir. Yes, three minutes sometimes goes slow, sometimes it goes fast. All right, I still do not see Brad. Julie Felifer. Claire Murphy. Barry Teagle.
Yes.
Right? Okay, thank you.
I'm a property owner on Bay Shore, and I'm an Illinois resident. When my wife and I first met, you know, over twenty years ago, we, we had a big thing about what was better, Door County or up there Harbor Springs, Toscay area of Michigan, and it was this thing that we went back and forth with all the time. And who was going to win? Well, she won. She won. And one of the things that, the reasons why is because of the people up here. We really enjoyed the people up here, and we could stay at a place that was very private up there, couldn't go there. It was very sort of restrictive. And one of the things we fell in love with coming up here was, you know, the things that you guys like as well, is just the ability to get a different kind of experience. And, you know, we never really liked the hotel thing, and, you know, we stayed on a boat a few times and different things like that, but, you know, the trends are changing, and they're, they're kind of leaning towards home sharing. I think we've seen that nationwide. But the people are just like you and I. We finally owned here for five years. We didn't own in the past, but we were just like you guys coming up. And if we would have had our choice limited, we wouldn't have come up. I couldn't get vacation time, worked very hard every year, and I could only get a weekend. And so our choices was always a two or three day. That's it. We wouldn't have been able to come up here, and we would be going to Michigan. And all the people and all our family members that we all come up here now are coming up here and enjoying what we have to offer. They're not people that are causing a ruckus or anything like that. But I'm bringing essentially, would like to retire here, but I'm bringing out-of-state money in and contracting Door County workers to work on the property, and we are spending all that money that we bring in to fix up the house, fix up the property, to keep it immaculate. And, you know, some people will be just like me, where they only get those two to three days, and they may not be able to get anything more than that. We just had somebody that came by for Mother's Day, and all, all this mother wanted was a weekend in the lake house with a view. And they came to Door County for the first time, and they fell in love. But this would not be possible under this new ordinance. And if we can't offer that, then people are going to go elsewhere. And so I really think we need to think about that. I probably wouldn't have bought up here if they said, well, you can't rent it out. I just wanted to have the option. I wanted to have that option. So I don't think we need to limit choice. I think we need to actually address the problem and find out what the true cost is, the true economic cost of not allowing people to come up. I think if we don't have a dollar amount for that, then I think we need to look harder and get some actual facts and some dollars to find out, how is this going to negatively impact, you know, the economy up here? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Barry. Okay, gentleman just came in the back row. What is your name, sir?
Jim DuKane.
Oh, Jim DuKane, okay. Oh, I'm sorry, we're running ahead of schedule, but Brienne Teagle? And Jim, you're next.
My name is Brienne Teagle, and we have property at five-seven-nine-nine Bay Shore Drive in Sturgeon Bay. And as my husband said, for the past five years, we have owned up here, and for the past four years, we have rented our family home as a short-term rental, and we're not able to be here. And I value so much the experiences that I hear about from our renters, and we're thrilled that we've been able to foster their love of Door County, many of whom, these people have never been up here before. And so I'm concerned about some of the steps being suggested that I think will be detrimental to this common goal of helping our communities grow and prosper. I mean, I understand the concerns about rental properties in residential areas. It's important, but the fact of the matter is, most of us who do live here now, even part-time, started out as visitors, and we came up here for the weekend. Even though we now view this as home, for many people, it's still going to be a second residence. And the option of renting them out to help others come and enjoy that experience as well and hopefully contribute to the economy is an important part of this discussion. And I feel that limiting things the way that we're discussing right now will negatively affect not only tourism, but the real estate values and tax incomes as well. Of course, there's occasions where renters are disruptive, but it's not the norm. As others have mentioned, we've got far more situations where locals and homeowners are throwing parties, having friends and family up during the short times that they're here to stay. If you look down our block at any point during the month of July, especially the Fourth of July week, it's all people who live here and own properties, and they're loud, and they're having cars parked up and down the street. And do we care? No. And if it was a problem, then let's discuss that. Being excessively loud and contributing to parking issues are not exclusive to short-term rentals. And as opposed to renters, there's no accountability in place. Renters have reviews to be concerned about. They have situations where this will affect their ability to rent some other time, and typically, they're looking at it as sitting in someone else's home and trying to be more respectful as a result. Of course, there need to be restrictions in place, but they need to make sense, and they need to be enforced. Things like noise ordinances, parking restrictions that require for all parking to be on the property as opposed to the streets, limits on events or numbers of guests per household based on septic limitations, et cetera. And perhaps something even like a three-strike rule, where maybe the rental owner is responsible if there's a complaint made on behalf of their renter, and they have a chance for three write-ups in a certain timeframe, and they may have to pay a fine or lose rental privileges or something like that. But by implementing a six-night minimum, you are focusing on the one restriction that doesn't actually impact anything. It doesn't address the biggest concerns, and in fact, as someone else mentioned, if you run across a bad renter, you've now just opened yourself up to the possibility of being locked into that situation for six nights instead of maybe three or four. By looking at these other options, you allow for a healthy rental environment while protecting the things important to all of us: our homes, our property values, our neighbors, our community, and we all care very much about these things. So why don't we look at these things first? As my husband said, there's no doubt we would have not been coming up here if we couldn't have come up for the weekend, we couldn't get time off, and we wouldn't have fostered these situations. We wouldn't have contributed tax dollars. We wouldn't have built other people's love of the area. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Mr. DuKane.
Hi, my name is Jim DuKane, and I live in Luxembourg, Wisconsin, about twenty minutes from here, and I own a house at thirty-nine forty-six Bay Shore Drive. In two thousand twelve, I was looking at a piece of property. I approached Linda Wade here at the town because I wanted to build a new vacation rental. I wanted to build a home specifically for vacation rental. Linda assisted me through the process, got me in contact with all the correct jurisdiction, jurisdictions to properly go through all the channels to make sure all my bases were covered when I built a brand-new home for a vacation rental. This included Door County Sanitarium as well as Door County Zoning Administration, which Town of Sebastopol uses. In two thousand thirteen, I completed the project. I was state inspected, and I received an occupancy permit from the Town of Sebastopol. My property is currently listed with Door County Property Management. I've been with them for eight years, and we have had zero issues. Not one complaint has gotten back to me or them in regards to my property. Through these eight years, I have made numerous friends along Bay Shore Drive, my next-door neighbors, that at first, they weren't quite sure, and then we turned out to be friends, and now their families are renting my property for summer vacations because they're not going to do the hotel thing. They'd like to be close, and they have their family experience. So it's really been a fun little journey for me, and my, some of my neighbors are really benefiting from having me there. So over the past, since September, I started getting involved in watching these meetings since September. I have watched Town of Sebastopol residents walk into these rooms and ask this board for help. There's new, there's actually dozens of them. I went through and I re-watched a bunch of these videos, residents in your town that are asking you for help because you will destroy their livelihood if you implement a six-day minimum. They have to sell because the numbers don't work. Myself included, we have to have our shoulder seasons in order to keep our homes. Without May, without September, without October, we can't make it. And if you, if you go back and watch the meetings, we basically beg you to consider what we were asking. We're asking you to look at it from our side of things and say, we are willing to work with you. We are all about an ordinance, but not this one. This one has so much government in it, you're going to need your own police force just to manage it. It has a lot of government in it. And instead, you are talking about using a company in St. Paul, Minnesota, that you're going to pay our tax dollars to a company that's based out of St. Paul, Minnesota, and the next closest outlet is Denver, Colorado. And that's what we're going to use our tax base for. I'm asking you to look back and redo, look back at this ordinance and see if we can go back to the original plan of three nights, and let's start there, and hopefully, everybody can find some common ground, and we're able to work with you guys. Thank you.
Okay, I just got a note from our chairman. If you look at the most recent ordinance, it reflects one stay within a six-night period. If your rental is seven days or longer, there is no minimum night stay. Right now, the ordinance does not have a minimum night stay. It is one stay per six-night period, and we're hoping to have some examples of that, but we don't have them yet. So just in case there's some misinformation out there on a six-night minimum, it is not a six-night minimum. It is one stay within a six-night period. Does that, if that helps clarify things? Okay? Kiri Chernakel?
Could you just clarify that one more time before we go further? If you, if I rent on a Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, can I rent the weekend before or the weekend after? If I have a tenant for three nights, say, that pays for six, will you rent, let me rent the weekend before or the weekend after? That is the most confusing part of this ordinance.
And like I said, we hope to have some clarification. At the outset here, we said we would not be answering any questions or carrying on a discussion.
You brought this up.
So I did bring it up, right? But I was just, that's the most clarification I can give you now, Jim.
You mentioned that before the meeting started.
Like I said, the most recent ordinance does reflect that. One stay per six nights, okay? So I apologize if you haven't looked at the most recent ordinance. That's what it says. All right, so we're still waiting for Brad. Is there anybody in this room who has not spoken?
There's one gentleman outside.
Okay, there's a gentleman outside, so we'll see if Amy can wrangle him in. I do see some phone numbers here, so we might take a recess for maybe five or ten minutes to give these people a call, and maybe they could pop over ahead of time. Again, anyone at the Institute Saloon and the dance hall wishing to speak, please come on over. on over. We'll wait for Amy to come back here, see if there's someone waiting in the parking Well, I was glad to hear that there are still Packer fans in the Tampa area. My sister lives in Tampa, and she actually roots for the Packers unless they're playing the Bucks.
There's a bar and a water key that has the Packer game, and that's hard to do in the South.
I think I'll talk to you better coming in.
Okay, so we do have a couple coming in, and we'll have them speak, and like I said, maybe we'll take a recess for five, 10 minutes and try to make some phone calls. All right, sir? Your name, please?
Okay, sir. John Hermanson.
John Hermanson. Okay. So, all right, so we're running ahead of schedule, so even though you haven't pre-registered, that's fine. Please state your name and address, and there is a three-minute limit, and we do have our timekeepers, Andrew and Elizabeth, so they are, they will flip over like when you're down to 60 or 30 seconds. It's input only, so we won't be having any discussion back and forth, so please go ahead.
Okay, great, thanks. Hi, my name is John Hermanson, and I live at 948 Memorial Drive in Sturgeon Bay, and I identify as an environmentalist, businessperson, and a human being. So I live in a home on the water where we have three rooms we use for short-term rental. I took my life savings and totally remodeled an old home in order to live in it, to do short-term rentals, and pay waterfront property taxes. Our average stay is two to three nights. I'm excited for Door County's Wide Green Tier program. I'm excited that Egg Harbor is leading sustainable communities in our area. I'm also excited about Door County's initiative on care for our county, and many short-term rentals have the opportunity to connect in a personal way with visitors to Door County. We have the opportunity to temper behavior, and better yet, help them to fall in love with the place and want to care for it. Some may decide to move to Door County, bringing their talent and youth to our community. I think it is good that the Sebastian Plan Commission, you folks, have brought up this issue. I do feel the night, the six-night minimum is too restrictive. While a three-night minimum would help temper future short-term rental proliferation, which you seem to feel is a real concern, while allowing existing short-term rentals to persist, this looks like compromise to me, while a six-night minimum goes too far. The Sebastian permit at $500 and the $350 following annual fee is burdensome enough. I am also hoping that mediation will follow with a better outcome than expensive lawyering I anticipate if a six-night ordinance is passed. So, and I really appreciate the work that you folks put in as community members and your diligence, and, you know, I think in the end, it's, we're going to come out with a good outcome. So thanks for your work.
Thank you.
Julie?
I was told next, so I'll head on up here. Good evening. First off, thank you for the opportunity to speak here. My name is Julie Felhoffer. My husband, Josh, spoke at a previous meeting, hi Mark, and provided our situation, but I just want to quick recap it if I can. During the last year, we had to put Josh's grandfather in a nursing home, and we were fortunate enough to be able to purchase his home, which is my husband's childhood home just down the road, and keep it in our family. We intend to rent it to help offset some of the expenses and hopefully allow us to continue to have our home here in Door County. Josh indicated that at that meeting, he also asked the board to answer the following question or consider the following question as far as when was the last time you traveled to the tri-state area or even the Midwest and stayed in one place for six nights? Our main concern is the six-night minimum stay. I'm not here to talk about what Josh talked about, though. I'm here to read messages from our upcoming renters. I believe these messages that each renter provided just at booking time, not upon request, but just to give us a, I'm amazed, actually, the people that use these services. I never send a message to the person hosting me, but people really get excited about sharing their vacation plans. But I'm hoping that these messages will demonstrate that our renters are anything but a threat to the public health and safety and general welfare of housing in our town specific to short-term rentals. And I have, there's about 11 messages that I've gotten, 11 bookings, and there's only one that didn't provide me a little background to why they're coming to Door County. The first message from Sam. "My wife, our daughter, and our two best friends are traveling to Door County for a weekend of relaxation and fun. I will be participating in the Door County triathlon that will take place in the morning on July 17th. We plan to visit wineries and just explore the beautiful countryside on the days not spent watching me swim, run, and bike in circles." Second one from Elizabeth. "My siblings and my kids are going to visit Door County. We are getting two Airbnbs. The kids are ages 21 to 39, two married couples and two singles, and they will be staying at your place. We'll be vaccinated then, and this is a conservative group. Group meals will be in the Airbnb in Sturgeon Bay." Okay, so we wanted to go, no, just kidding. Number three from John. "My family is traveling with my mother to celebrate her birthday in August. We will be visiting different attractions within Door County." The fourth one from Gregory. "We're an extended family from Chicago area, a dad with three adult children and a son-in-law. Plan to spend vacation in Door County." Fifth one from Ross. "Hi, what is the most people you will allow? We plan to come after July 4th for four to five nights and need a place to sleep and eat breakfast while we explore the beautiful area around your home. Thank you." And he followed that up with, "There's two adults and five children. Two of them are infants." So they're hoping to have room. Okay, I see my timer. The sixth one from Earl, I apologize. "Looking at renting your place for three to four of us for fishing in May. Want to confirm that there's room to park two trucks with bass boats and have power available. My husband is from a fishing family, so any given day of most summers, there's probably two or three fishing boats lined up in that driveway anyway." And the last one was from one that actually canceled. "One of our guests has a service animal still in training. Is that okay?" So we, right now, ask for a three-night minimum. I think the type of families that we're attracting to our rental are the ideal type of families that you'd want to see vacationing and staying in our community. Imposing fees will make it more difficult to offset our expenses, but imposing a six-night minimum, this may prevent us from keeping our home in Door County. In my opinion, being able to rent our home in the manner that we choose helps us to protect, and this is words from the ordinance, protect the character and stability of our home and our residents and the neighborhood around it. So, thank you, I appreciate it. Sorry.
I'm just going to repeat what we said a few minutes ago. We do not have a six-night minimum. So if you didn't catch that a little...
Linda, you have to understand that limiting one stay for six nights is limiting rentals, correct?
We're not going to have discussion back and forth.
Okay, just stop having discussion back and forth.
Who's, let's see, Kiri? Kiri Chernagel.
My name is Kiri Chernagel. I'm a Sturgeon Bay resident and work for The Simple Life Hospitality, a vacation rental property management company that serves property owners in the Towne-Sevastopol. I'm also co-owner of Nextdoor Neighbor, a concierge and cleaning company that serves property owners in the Towne-Sevastopol. Thank you for your time this evening. You are hearing many different points, and rather than address a number of them with my time, I'd like to address one main point of the proposed ordinance. The average night stay in Door County is 3.4 nights. Restricting the length of stays in alignment with the proposed ordinance will hurt the tourism industry in the county as well as here in the Towne-Sevastopol. Restricting the stays will cause many short-term rental owners to have to sell, as you heard from Deborah earlier this evening and Jim just a few minutes ago. These owners pay the property taxes and contribute to the room dollars, which greatly benefit the Towne-Sevastopol, including support for this very building that we're meeting in. Many of the owners we happen to represent may not live in the area, but they do utilize a local management company that oversees their property and takes great care of it. The owners strive to be good neighbors and make sure there is a local representative looking over the property. The management company ensures that the proper licenses are obtained and address any issues that may come up during a stay. Restricting short-term rentals may not only, will not only affect property owners, but will absolutely cause a domino effect. Many individuals rely on the tourism industry for work. A cleaning company such as Nextdoor Neighbor cleans the rentals. We give work to nearly 20 individuals, several of them being residents of the Towne-Sevastopol. Restricting short-term rentals will drive visitors to other areas. They will take their spending dollars with them. They will go to different restaurants, shop at different shops, and buy gas elsewhere. There may be a few bad owners out there, and if so, they need to be addressed. You've heard many of the speakers this evening acknowledge this. However, an overreaching ordinance that affects many does not need to be the solution. My husband is in public education. He was a high school principal before he moved here. When two students got into an altercation in the hallway, the misbehavior of the two students was addressed. The entire student body wasn't suspended from school. Please don't punish all the bad actions for, please don't punish all for the bad actions of a few. Instead, I encourage you to please take up the offer of mediation and have the right people work together to solve this issue. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Kiri.
Linda, I'd like to make a motion for a recess.
Oh, sure. We'll take a five or eight-minute recess, give everybody a time to stand, okay? All right, so we'll resume our public hearing here. Brad, Birmingham, please. State your name and address.
My name is Brad Birmingham. I reside at 4729 Bay Shore. I really have a couple things just to ask and a couple questions, but my first question is of the panel makeup, the Plan Commission of non-hospitality, non-bed-and-breakfast owners, non-STRs, non-lodging liaison people who have used or have not used the STRs, and also wondering why the Plan Commission is recommending any legislation, why the Plan Commission is involved, being a town committee. One of the largest businesses in Sevastopol is tourism. Whether you like it or not, it's here. We get money from it. We spend money to get it. And we have a new welcome sign by Culvers, and I'm wondering how much it costs, who pays for it? If this ordinance goes through, it should read, "Welcome to Sevastopol. If you stay six nights or longer, have fun, but if you stay as one, two, or three nights, you're not welcome here. Have a great day." The state of Wisconsin, the Wisconsin Department of Tourism, sent out some letters, and some of you might have got it in the pulser, some of you might have got it in the mail, but it's promoting Wisconsin tourism. And here, it's a scenic byway. It does not mention Sevastopol, and it is a one-night stay at each one of these places for seven nights in the Towne-Sevastopol. It also is for Nicolay Wolf River Scenic Byway, Wisconsin Great River Road, and the Lake Superior National Scenic Byway. Very instrumental in one-night stays for what our state is promoting for its tourism. We have much, we pay much in room tax money, sales tax money, income tax money, school tax money. We pay fees for licenses. We have two businesses in Sevastopol, and I have 17 tax parcels in this town. We've made a commitment and an investment into our town. We live here, and we work here, and we want to be here. What does the Towne-Sevastopol give back to us? We should get something in advertising for our businesses. We should have a website. We should be promoting our businesses. If I'm a member and I see this advertising and Sevastopol is not mentioned as a place to stay in the Wisconsin tourism, I should, think we should be on top of that situation and talk to the tourism secretary and wonder why. I mean, we're integral part, we, people, we are part of Door County. We are not just a part to get there. I think we should try to do something positive for our STRs. We should not always just sit back and everything is negative. They're going to be a big part of our community. We should have people that listen to them. We should have people who use them, people who rent them. They're going to be an integral part of our rental and lodging for many, many years, and I think it will add tax base to our Sevastopol community, which it already has. Your committee talked about all the bad STRs and how many good ones there are, and I really believe that you're failing to see that. I don't believe in the ordinance as it stands. It is not acceptable. A one-night stay in six, a six-night period is not acceptable either. The water quality won't change for STRs. The zoning is not going to change for STRs. I just, I guess I'm here to really question, and I hope that my business, I want to make sure, as I was told, my recreational commercial business owning property in the Towne-Sevastopol having rental cottages, STRs, will not change by this ordinance or any other ordinance involving this STR. Thank you. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Brad.
Good evening. Thank you. As Brad has just said, my family...
Excuse me, Christine, could you state your name and address, please?
Christine Dejne, 334 West Bruce Street, Sturgeon Bay.
Thank you.
As Brad just said, I have a really strong gut feeling that you're going to regret this move because it's going to affect the tourism. Our family, which is rather large, has owned property and come up to this area for about 80 years now. It's been a place of fantasy and fun and joy and relaxation, and if you start putting a lot of regulations, a lot of rules and fees on them, people are not going to want to come up. And I know the people that we have that stay at our place when we're not there, they go in town, they spend lots of money, and they have a good time, and they rent boats, and they go to all the tourist sites around. You're going to lose a lot of that. Our family does, hasn't, we do short-term rental, but we go through an agency, and we pay them. They're the, they've gotten a lot, they've given us lots of rules, too. So now, what, we got two organizations telling us what to do? It's not right. And here's one little story before I go. We have had a cottage on the lake for, like I said, at least 80 years. And we all come up, we have a large family, we all come up, and we bring our pets with us. It rotates, we're not usually all up there at the same time. Well, a couple years ago, some people moved in to the cottage next door to us, which was, had been empty, and they had a mid-sized dog. authorities and complained because our dogs were bigger and they might scare their little dog. So, the outcome of all that is now we can't bring our dogs up to the cottage, but they have theirs. It's feeling to me like a case of the squeaky wheel. Whoever has the most power, whoever has the most money, whoever yells the loudest, they get to have their way. And it's not fair. It's not right. And those of us who have property up here either inherited it or we worked really, really hard to get it, and we worked really, really hard to keep it. I just would like all of you, because I know you want the best for Door County, as we all do, a couple of us in our family actually live here now, to reconsider this. I think in your attempt, in your attempt to solve a problem, you're only creating more problems. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Claire Murphy?
She's not coming.
Claire Murphy is not coming. All right, thank you, Amy.
Good evening. I'm Karen Bernt, and I actually live in Bailey's Harbor, 8080 Highway 57, and I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak to your town. I wear many hats, and I have worn many hats. I've lived in Northern Door for over 25 years. Spent my last 15 years in my real career as being a nurse at our local ER. I'm a business owner. I own Harbor Fish Market and Grill in Bailey's Harbor, and I also, incidentally, own six different short-term rentals around this Northern Door County. Spent a lot of time working with local agencies, supporting our local people and our local businesses, and that's what I'd like you to consider tonight. Businesses are going to be impacted greatly by this kind of a regulation. I totally agree with making sure that we're properly licensed, that the health departments are here. Again, all the different ways that I serve the area, but I want you to consider how these kind of restrictions with one visit within six days is going to impact our local theaters, our local art galleries, our local restaurants will be impacted. I have the opportunity, I've been in that restaurant for 22 years, and we have had a very good business, and we continue to have a very good business. But especially over the last couple of years, things have changed and small businesses are going out of business. It doesn't do any of us any good to see empty buildings or empty places that aren't healthy. In Bailey's Harbor, we had the opportunity to purchase the old Nelson's Building, and as a town, we did that in order to make sure that we didn't have some great big business pull in. As I understand it, we could have had 22 rooms on that area, but the town purchased that in order to keep our town that way. Smart growth is important to all of us. I don't want to be overpopulated, and I don't want unsafe conditions, but I want to be able to hold my business and keep my short-term rentals that way. I abide by all the rules, and I think rules are in place for just those reasons. I have over 50 employees, probably three-quarters of them live and work right here. If I'm impacted by this kind of regulation that might occur throughout the county, they will be impacted. And currently, in the last couple of years, they've been impacted greatly, and I don't need that to happen to them. I'm also concerned about dogs not being able to stay in a private building. We are dog-friendly at our restaurant. We encourage people to bring them, but I'm really concerned about leaving a dog in a car in the heated weather in this area. I don't think that's a safe condition and certainly not something we want to promote. Currently, we have encouraging people to bring their pets. A lot of places are dog-friendly. That's really important. Like you to consider those things, and I really thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you today. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Karen.
Is on his way.
Is on his way. Patty Colleton? Patty Colleton? Okay.
My name is Patty Colleton. I own on Bay Shore Drive and also in Fish Creek. They're all family homes that we also rent out. I'm kind of wearing two hats tonight. I originally was just going to speak as a private citizen, but I also founded the Door County Vacation Rental Association in desperate hopes of trying to educate future owners and current owners on how not to cause problems. So I'd like to make a couple of points, both personal and business. The main ones that I want to do for the DCVRA are rebuttal points, things that were mentioned tonight that I don't think were fair or truthful. One gentleman said that even with the one night and six, one stay in three, in six nights, that expenses could still be met. I think that's disingenuous. He doesn't know what any of our budgets are but his own to speak to that. The gentleman said that we are worldwide big businesses. That's also absurd. We're families and small business owners who advertise on a platform that reaches worldwide. I'd like to clarify that one stay per six nights is equally as untenable financially because it cuts the revenue in half. We can't charge for six nights and have them only stay three. So if it's three and six, it's only three and six. The person that said back to our commercial activities, who Wisconsin State Supreme Court disagrees with that. Activities in short-term rentals are the same as long-term rentals or owner-occupied, eating, sleeping, reading, games. Length of stay does not magically convert those to commercial activities. Then I'd like to give voice to two voiceless groups on a personal note, the elderly and pets. I can't begin to know what is in all of your hearts, but I can tell you from the outside how it is appearing. Your dismissal of mediation so far makes it appear as though you're less interested in creating solutions than exerting control. I don't vote in Sebastopol, but I do vote, and I vote for representatives that I think will negotiate solutions, not for people that I think are going to want to control my income and my destiny. One of the rights of owning property is to derive income from it. Imagine a small group of folks unrelated to you, maybe you've never met, suddenly make a unilateral decision over your assets and say, "That pension you earned all those years working, it's now being cut in half because we don't like your pension plan." That's an egregious thing to do to people. My family's home isn't in Sebastopol. We're in Lake Harbor Township. It's a purpose-pilped vacation home owned by my 85-year-old mother, who is now wheelchair-bound after 50 years on her feet as a hairdresser, wife, and mother. The income from our guests, not one of whom has ever caused a problem or for complaint that we have owned it, is what allows her and our family to afford the care that she needs to stay out of a nursing home and in the home that she raised her children in. We all know what fate befell a large number of nursing home residences last year. If our home was a few thousand feet south of this location that it is in, it would be subject to this ordinance that you're proposing, and you would literally be forcing an 85-year-old woman out of the home that she raised her family in because you find a small percentage of tourists annoying. I'm also incredibly concerned about the pet restrictions in the ordinance. Aren't any of you pet owners? Would you write a regulation that inevitably is going to lead to someone leaving their dog in a hot car? 70 degrees, to us it's beautiful, to them it's deadly. Please engage in the mediation so we can find something that's fair to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. Okay, are we only listening? Are you Brian by any chance?
No.
Okay. Please state your name and address when you get to the podium.
Hi, my name is Cody Leist. My wife Ashley, sons Shane and Everett, and I live at 4906 Rip Road. We have lived here for three years. We're from here. We did not retire here. We do not own any other homes anywhere else. This is our one home. It's our first home. We have been renovating this home since we got the key. We just, we just finished up getting all the documentation, all the inspections and everything to be able to rent our home for three months out of the summer to offset some of our expenses that we have. The biggest issue that I draw with this is this six-night minimum or six-night, one-night, whatever it is. I feel like that's a huge issue because it's just going to absolutely cripple our small little VRBO that we have. I believe there's a better alternative, and having mediation about it would be the way to go with it before going forward with this six-night ordeal. I think we should work together and come up with something better. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Cody. Okay, so Brian is on his way?
Yes.
And I believe that is it for those who registered. I don't think we've missed anyone. We'll go through the list one more time. Okay, so we will wait for Brian. We are resuming our public hearing here. We have one more people, person. Are you Mr. Dougal? All right. So you can go to the podium there, Brian. Please state your name and address and proceed.
Proceed. Literally. Literally, right? First time speaking in an event like this. My name is Brian Dougal. I own a property at 5419 Pine Tree Road, Sturgeon Bay. We purchased the property back in 2016 with the sole intent, I was using an important income property in short-term rental, which when we purchased it, it was sold as such, too. So the previous owner was using it for short-term rental, and she shared with us her earnings per year and how much that property generated in revenue. So that was a selling factor, a buying factor for myself and my wife. We're going to use this for retirement income and such, so purchased it. Paid about a million dollars for the property. It was a higher-end property, a large property, 5,500 square feet, and our maximum occupancy is 14 people. So it's a, the rental on the property when we purchased it, I believe, was like $900 a night. Right off the bat, we had to upgrade the septic to accommodate 14 people. Previous renter was a private home, I believe, at first, and it was only accommodating for a three-bedroom or six people. So, right off the bat, we had to stick money into it, and we probably invested $300,000 or $400,000 since then, just bringing it up to standards where we think that we would earn more money in doing so. After all the renovations and remodeling and improvements we made to it, we were able to generate $1,500 a night. Just renting for that. And I do, I didn't even bring copies for everybody. I just, this was our last minute. I wasn't planning on being here. I was in the middle of cleaning a pond 20 minutes ago. At any rate, I just went on VRBO's site, generated their rental report. So basically, it shows the number of nights in the grayed area are all under six. So there's, the property, since I owned it, has generated, I can share this with you guys or leave it with you, but the date has generated $272,000, which 11% of that will go towards taxes. So you guys can do the math, and I don't have an actual tax report. So just the revenue alone that you guys would be losing, as well as us changing to a six-day rental, is just, you know, extreme. So I mean, I guess that I, I don't know if I can share this with you, but I mean, just looking at the grayed out areas are less than six-day rentals, and it's probably 90% of my rentals. Between that, and I understand that you would still accept three-days rentals, but the majority of them, if I couldn't rent the property for the six days as you're proposing, I would have lost out probably about 75% of these rentals because they're a three-day rental, and usually there's a short span over May through September these are, so they are back-to-back, and it would just put us out of business. I mean, the intent of this is an income property, to lose, it would be more than 50% of the revenue. The grayed out areas here is probably 90%. And I can share these with you or leave a report. You know, you can look it up on VRBO or whatever the case may be, but it's just, it would impact us so much that we'd probably sell the property and just leave because it's, as it is now with all the improvements we put in there, we're not breaking even now. So to, so to be forced into the six-day program is just detrimental to me and so many other people. I'm sure others have echoed the same, same thing I'm saying tonight. I understand there's other concerns about neighbors and such, but I mean, we're, my property's on six acres. I mean, the closest neighbor doesn't hear us at all. So I mean, it's, to be grouped in a category with everybody's got to be, you know, suffer for a few rowdy households that are, you know, having renters. I mean, we screen all our renters. I probably turned down 50, 50% of our renters want to hold weddings at the property, and we don't allow that just as a courtesy to our neighbors. We don't want loud music or events or parties or anything of that nature which would disturb our neighbors. So we're very conscious of that.
Okay, okay, Brian. All the others have three minutes, so even though you're the last speaker-
I thought I could talk for a-
If you could just, if you could wrap it up in-
Basically, that's-
Fifteen seconds or less.
That's the revenue report. I can leave it with you here, but I mean, it's, it's just so extreme. I mean, maybe 5% of our renters are six-days or more, so you can, the $300,000 revenue we generated would be $30,000 or less. I don't see any point to this six-day rental. That's my 30 seconds, I guess.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming over, too.
Thank you.
I know we were running way ahead of schedule, so. I think everyone who wished to speak has spoken. At least those who have, everyone who signed up, except for one consolation, cancellation. So, I can't think of any other business. I guess we could, well, if I asked for a motion to adjourn, that would be official business, and we said we would not conduct any official business tonight. So I will just adjourn this public hearing at 8:0, what time do you have, Amy?
8:05.
8:05 PM. We are concluded for the evening. Thank you all.